May 2024, meeting for the City of Troy's Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a couple cases on our agenda tonight and a few other miscellaneous items. So let's get started. Let's begin with the roll call of our board members who are here tonight. So Mr. Evans, whenever you're ready, if you could call the roll.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. Desmond?
Here.
Mr. Kenkri?
Here.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Evans. We will next move on to our reading of the Statement of Procedure, which gives us the guidelines for how we'll handle the cases in front of us. And for that, I will turn to my immediate right, Mr. Desmond, our vice chair. If, when he's ready, could read for us our rules of procedure.
The Zoning Board of Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by the Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Applicants must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The Board will hear the items in order that they appear on the approved agenda. When an item is called, the chairperson will verify that the applicant is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. If there is less than a full Board of seven members present at a meeting, an applicant may request a postponement, so his or her request can be heard by a full Board. If there is no request for a postponement, the applicant will then be given an opportunity to address the Board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the applicant makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairperson will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairperson, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, i.e. next-door neighbor, live behind property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairperson. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairperson to speak at one time. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairperson will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
All right, thank you, Mr. Desmond. Let's move on to our approval of the meeting minutes from the last time we met, which was February 20, 2024. I trust members of the Board have had a chance to look at the minutes as printed, and unless there's any discussion, would look for a motion to approve. Mr. Green?
So moved.
Second. All right, Mr. Green, motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Desmond. Mr. Evans, ready?
Who made the second?
Can I? Oh, yeah, Mr. Desmond made the second, sorry. Motion by Mr. Green.
Okay.
And we are ready to vote.
Yes. Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
All right, meeting minutes are approved. Now we'll move on to our fourth item, which is approving tonight's agenda, which has been printed for us. Unless there's any discussion or input, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 5B, for a matter at 5356 Capri, was removed from the agenda after it went to print. So if anyone is here or watching on TV for that case, it has been removed from the agenda, and we don't know if it's going to be on a future agenda. That will be up to the applicant if they decide they want to reapply.
All right, thank you. So we will strike 5B from tonight's agenda and just proceed on 5A and then on to 6. So with that change to the agenda, unless there's any further discussion, we will go ahead and approve that and move forward as amended. And now we will move on to item 5, which is the hearing of our case tonight, which is at 233 Nottingham. And I will note for the record, first of all, just for myself, that 233 Nottingham is located within the subdivision that I live in. I don't live near that home, but it is in my subdivision. So I believe I can hear the case fairly and impartially, but unless any member of the Board would want to discuss that point, we can continue. Okay, just wanted to disclose that. All right. So Mr. Evans, if you could begin with an overview of 233 Nottingham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and referencing the overheads on the screens. This is a variance request to allow a proposed home addition to be constructed 38.34 feet from the rear property line, where the zoning ordinance requires the addition to be set back 45 feet from the rear property line. Now, I've got an aerial map of the neighborhood, and at the bottom is Long Lake, to the left is Livernoy, and the subject property is circled and outlined in red. I'll continue to zoom in. This is the property here at 233 Nottingham. And just of note, the property adjacent to the north is the city fire station owned by the city. And here's an additional close-up of the property and the neighbors. Now, this is the survey they provided. We have the existing house. They want to put an enclosed room in the location marked in color here, and the setback, if they do receive their variance, will result in 38.34 feet from this north rear property line. This is a view of the property provided by the applicant from the back or the north. This is the area where they want to construct it. This is a view from the side, same area. And the applicant has provided sample elevations on how the structure will look. And these are all slides out of the zoning board agenda packet. So I'll turn it back over to the Board for any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Evans. Does any member of the Board have a question for city staff? Not seen any questions at this point. We will invite the petitioner or the applicant forward. If you would like to come up to the podium, and please introduce yourself and your relationship to the property. And we have the materials that you submitted, but we would be glad to hear anything you want to tell us about your variance request.
Certainly. My name is Jason with Waincraft, the sunroom company. This is just going to be basically one of our very simple standardized sunrooms that we do a lot throughout the metro area. And we're just looking for about seven extra feet for the rear yard setback. Nothing really invasive, just kind of trying to reuse what they have and just kind of improve upon what they already have in their yard. But it's just a basic sunroom.
All right, thank you. Do any members of the Board want to just stay up here for a second? Any members of the Board, Mr. McCauley?
I'm looking at your diagram here, and why, it's 20 feet deep from what I, is that correct?
It's 20 foot wide, and it looks like roughly 15 feet out in projection from the house wall.
Okay, so my question is, why isn't this run across the back of the house more than what it does?
It was just the way that the customer had wanted it to be.
Okay. Is the homeowner here? Okay.
Hold on, sir. If you want, could you come forward? We have, this is all audio, and that gives us the record. So if you could speak into the microphone.
Yes. If we go much further to the side, it'll go over the dining room window. So we didn't want it to go across the dining room window. The porch that is currently there, the porch that is currently there is a covered porch but open on the sides. It extends out 10 feet and 15 feet wide. We are looking to go out a few more feet and a little bit wider than what's there.
Anything else, Mr. McCauley?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fox? I'm sorry. Mr. Fox isn't here. Mr. Green?
Thank you. So you said that it would be 20 wide, and I see that the roof line is 192 inches. Can you be a little more precise just on the depth?
Yeah, so when we measure, when we measure for the sunroom, the actual walls will protrude out 15 feet from the house wall itself. And then what we have is a one-foot overhang that goes around the perimeter of the sunroom just to help alleviate water dripping so it doesn't roll down the screens.
Sorry. Can I ask, have you found, I assume the answer is yes, but have you found the current footprint, the homeowner, to be insufficient in its current form area-wise? Or is it just a desire to try and build a little bit bigger?
The main reason we want it bigger than what's existing there is we'd like to put a hot tub in that room, and we need the extra space to put a hot tub in that room. We also don't want the moisture from the hot tub within the house. Well, we really don't have room in the house anyways, but it also gets the excess moisture out of the dwelling residence. It's simply a three-season room. And we chose, part of why we chose Waincraft is because it is an aluminum room. Aluminum and glass, with the concrete floor, of course, which is great, so it will all withstand moisture very well.
Any other Board members? So I have a question. I think it's for the gentleman from Waincraft. I'm just looking at the letter that was submitted. I don't know, Mr. Evans, if you can pull that up. I think it's on page 15 of at least the PDF file. The question I have, it's like the first page of the letter. The question I have is you talk about the practical difficulties that the homeowner is facing. And that's really, in terms of the criteria that we have to examine to determine whether to grant a variance, that's the set of criteria that we have to make sure we check the box on each one. So there is a practical difficulty. And there's a picture there, and then to the right you have some discussion about this being an irregularly shaped lot. Can you, I don't know if you wrote the letter, but can you walk us through that explanation as to why the irregular lot size and the gas meter location create a practical difficulty?
Well, I did not write the letter. It was one of the ladies who does our zoning board stuff. But in past meetings that we've had with other cities, usually an irregular lot will play into some sort of difficulty, whether from a side yard setback, a rear yard setback, things like that. And then a lot of times we try and stay far away from any type of gas meter or any type of utility so that we don't have to have the customer move it. But that's about it.
So where is the, where is the gas meter located now? And how does that tie into the?
The gas meter is over to the right side of the window, so on the other side of the dining room window. So we just like to stay farther away from that.
Okay. Is that, is that due to just regulation or DT rules?
No, it's, no, it's a preference by our company.
Okay. And I guess as it relates to the irregular lot size, so this is a question of setback from the rear, correct? That's what we're asking relief from is the setback.
Correct, yes.
So how does the, how does the irregular shape of the lot? I could, obviously you can see, I guess it's to the east, it's an irregular shaped lot. But how does that play on the rear setback?
I don't see any real difficulty for it, but we know that in other cities they've brought it up to us in the past, so we usually include it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for members of the Board? Mr. Green, you look like you're wanting to say something.
Yeah, I was wondering about the requirements for the hot tub. Just a quick cursory search finds that a three-person hot tub can be, can be had that's about seven feet and change in dimension. You're looking for, what do you say, about 15 plus the roof line. I don't know the code well enough. This may be for you, sir, but what is the requirement? What requirement would mandate that even for a three-person hot tub, you need 16 feet when you need seven feet? Or seven feet?
It's just for the room. There's no mandate, there's no code requirement for it to have a room. The only requirement that I'm aware of is to have tempered glass in the entire room. There's to be proper electrical to be hooked up to it. But from my knowledge, from when we used to have a hot tub, you know, you have a cover that you have to take off. You usually want to have a table or chairs to set down inside of it. And, you know, when you have an open patio cover like he had prior to that, you know, moving a cover out of the way is no issue. But when you're confined into a space, you know, you really don't have a place where you can store it outside. You have to move it to the side. And usually, from what I've seen with my customers, even when you have like this apparatus that allows you to flip up and move the hot tub cover over from the top, you still are going to have to have at least two to three feet just to manage that and store that while you're using the hot tub actively. You know, but I mean, for me, it's, you know, if you have to have like a platform or a landing or a set of steps to get into the hot tub, you know, you would want to have something in that, you know. I recall with, at least on my personal knowledge, growing up with one, it was, we had a hot tub, I think, where we had a two-foot border around the perimeter in our sunroom, and it was kind of rough getting in and out, especially when the hot tub blocks one side and then it's about 42 inches off the ground. So it's more of convenience for people as they get older. And then, so you're not just feeling like kind of cluttered or claustrophobic in that room.
Understood. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. I'll also add why I wanted 15 feet. So 15 feet, I'm assuming is to the outside wall of the room.
Yes.
So I would lose a few inches, approximately four to six, in the wall. So I have 14 foot, 14 and a half feet in there. The hot tub will need to be at least a foot, maybe slightly more, away from that wall. And it's a seven-foot hot tub. So it'll leave me about six feet from the wall, current wall of the home, where an electrical disconnect box has to be, which is code, to have in the vicinity of a tub. And it must be about six feet away from the tub.
Yes.
So that was my six-foot buffer that I needed away from the wall where the electrical box will have to be. And then that will give me the room I would need for the hot tub and a little bit distance away from the outer walls to move the cover and maybe access. That's why I wanted a 15-foot room.
Thank you.
Yes.
One final, sir, you said your name is Jason, what is your last name?
It's McFaul.
Thank you.
I just have one more question.
Yes.
For the gentleman from Waincraft. So would it be possible to build this structure to accommodate a hot tub within the current zoning setbacks?
Is it possible? Sure, I would say it's possible, but, you know, we really don't want to make it go wider. And we're only asking for about seven feet just to get it a little bit deeper into the rear yard. But I mean, if it needed to be, you know, would you be willing to accept it going wider?
Then we run into a major problem of where to put electrical boxes and things of that nature within the room. And it'll really kind of compromise the layout that I'm looking for, as well as I'd like to put a porch to the side of it. There's existing patio around this existing structure I have, and that would greatly kind of just be a weird layout of any porch or patio I tried to put around it. Would be a little, kind of odd.
Okay, thank you. I think we have no more questions for the applicant, so thank you very much. You're welcome to take a seat, and we will continue on. So at this point, we will open up the public hearing on this matter. So if there's any member of the public here who wants to step forward and identify yourself and speak in favor of or against the variance request, the floor is open. And I don't know, do we have any written correspondence?
We do not.
So nothing in writing regarding this from the public? And I don't see anyone jumping forward. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this point, take it back to members of the Board to discuss and/or make a motion. Mr. Eisenbacher?
I should have asked this question when the homeowner was up at the podium, but if you could please return to the stand, I have a question.
Yes.
Did you speak to your neighbors? Did you, did any of them inquire of you when they received their postcards?
None of my neighbors inquired to me directly, but I did speak to one of the neighbor on my east side who's closest to that, and he is fine with it. His house also has quite an extension added on to it as well that definitely goes closer to the boundary line, which, so he would barely see it. He has no problem with what I'm doing to my home. I have not spoken to the neighbor on the west side of my property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Green?
So I feel this is actually fairly straightforward. The first point is exceptional characteristics of property for which the variances sought make it substantially more difficult to comply. The property itself, if the consideration were width, that to me would make this a more compelling case. But he's looking for addition, the homeowner is looking for additional depth into a setback, and the depth is the same as his neighbors. So what he's looking for is not due to that exceptional shallowness which he does not have relative to his neighbors. The characteristics are related to those premises, not the neighbors and not their inability to see, but I appreciate knowing that. It is, to some degree, of a personal nature. You know, many people could want a hot tub, but it's certainly not a critical thing. That's arguable, but the characteristics, I agree, were not created by the homeowner. The gas meter's location, that's not the fault of the current homeowner or the previous owner. However, as has been noted, it is possible to put it in that footprint. I don't have a Jacuzzi in mind, but my, I happen to have a Florida room, and its dimensions are almost precisely what would be permitted without going into, without requiring a variance. And I don't know how a Jacuzzi would feel in it, but it's certainly not an insubstantial space. And so that desire to have a larger space is the homeowner's choice, and the desire to not cover the dining room kitchen window is, it's a preference. I understand it, but it is a preference. And I will, I will grant Jay, it does not harm the essential character or damage the property values, but I can't see my way to approving this, given those considerations. The electrical could be moved six feet away without requiring six feet of additional space from the wall. There could be less clearance, slightly less comfortable, but certainly possible to put in stairs or folding stairs to be able to get in or out. I will be voting no.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Any other members of the Board wish to discuss or make a pending motion? Mr. McCauley?
I agree with Mr. Green that this, the dimensions of this lot are not a factor in decision of this. The depth of the lot is no different than the other lots that are to the west of it, the one to the east of it. That's an odd lot, that's an irregularly shaped lot. That might be an issue for trying to put what this person wants to put, but I don't see that for this lot. I see the gas meter on the far side of the window, which, from my understanding, he doesn't want to put it over that window, so he'd go up to that window in a sense. So that's, that's non-factor as far as I'm concerned, too. I see no compelling items why we should grant this application. So I'm in agreement with Mr. Green that I would be voting no also.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCauley. Any other members of the Board wish to speak or make a motion? Okay, well, I will, I'm sorry, Mr. Fox, or Mr. Green, go ahead.
I, I move that the variance request for 233 Nottingham for a variance of, a moment, sorry, what is it? Five, 6.66 feet be denied for the following reasons. The applicant has not demonstrated exceptional characteristics of the property for which the variances sought make compliance with dimensional requirements substantially more difficult than would be the case for the majority of properties in the same zoning district. Notably, shallowness is not a factor, and that is the variance being requested. The characteristics which make the compliance with dimensional requirements must be related to the premises for which the variance is sought, and they are, however, the characteristics which make compliance with the dimensional requirements shall not be of a personal nature, and I find that they are. Likewise, the characteristics which make compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the current or previous owner, which, as noted, the homeowner could build out further to one side, and therefore they are. And while this proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential char, would not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located, nor impair the adequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. The other factors are compelling reason to deny this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green. So we have a motion from Mr. Green, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a second from Mr. McCauley. Unless there's any discussion, Mr. Eisenbacher, you?
I have one point of discussion. Again, I'd like to ask the homeowner a question. One thing that your representative, the contractor testified to is that it's possible to do this project without a variance. And looking at your picture of the rear of the house and listening to my colleagues, between that dining room window and the corner of your house, it's like a decent length. And it looks, again, I don't want to be designing this. And it looks, again, I don't want to be designing this for you, but part of our charge that you've heard my colleagues talk about is that, and I was just looking it up, because after this item this evening, we have training from our city staff on updates to the law, and one of the, one of the items is that there's no alternative way to do it without a variance. And hearing my colleagues that there's enough width, it looks like you could put the hot tub on one side and have space on the other side.
I would be allowed to come out seven feet. I'd have six and a half feet away from my house to put a seven-foot tub. Without a variance.
So without some sort of variance, it just wouldn't fit?
That is correct. I can only come out seven feet from my house without a variance. The existing porch that's covered comes out 10 feet currently.
Okay, so if it were 10 feet as you have currently, instead of 15, and you had additional width, which is not a limitation of this board, would that work for you?
I'd have to reevaluate the project and see if I'm going to continue investing in it, or just call it and lose my money and that, and all the time and money I've invested with them, and, you know, I'd have to reevaluate, I'll have to reevaluate the whole project. I might just scrap it then.
Again, we don't want to be engineering a solution or a item on the, in front of us here. Reading what's going on, it looks like there is not enough votes to pass it. I would like you to go back and see what your minimum would be for what you could survive and use the space.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
There's already a motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion that's been seconded, that that's what we have to decide at this point before we could get to another motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we need to dispose of Mr. Green's motion, up or down, before we could proceed on a motion to table it or adjourn it?
So the statement to my colleagues is that if he follows only the ordinance as written, any sunroom would be mostly useless, so, because of its narrowness. So I'd like to see an opportunity for the petitioner to get a minimal sunroom versus an excessively narrow sunroom, and have time for that. So, that'd be my argument against passing this, or the resolution on the table.
Sir, you can, we're going to continue to discuss, so you can, you go ahead and sit down. Thank you for coming back up. Okay, Mr. McCauley.
I got a question on procedure on this, just so to clarify what we're, what I'm, hearing Mr. Eisenbacher wanting you to do. If we, if this fails, the current motion on there, can we propose a postponement at that point in time to give him the opportunity to rewrite his application? Is that the proper procedure to do that, to give him that opportunity? Because if we say no to it right now, he can't come back with another application for a year, correct?
Well, he can come back, and reading what the board is saying, if he asks for a lesser variance, that would be okay, to come back, he wouldn't be...
But he'd have to file again and everything else.
Of course. Yes, and then the neighbors would be notified that he's asking for a lesser variance, if that's what he does. Now, if you want to postpone it, and he submits a revised site plan showing the same, a lesser variance, that could be considered. If he asks for more of a variance, he can't.
Okay.
Now, so we would not be renoticing, so neighbors would have to make sure if they're interested to stay on top of what's going on here.
Makes sense.
Right.
Judging by all the peoples in the crowd today and the letters we got, I don't think there's a real big interest in it. So as far as reposi, I see what Mr. Eisenbacher's saying, and I agree with Mr. Eisenbacher from that degree, let's give him the opportunity to redo it, even though we do have a motion on the table. So I would not be in favor of this motion now, I would say no to it, and then I would be inclined to do the postponement, to give the homeowner the opportunity to remedy it to best of his ability, and bring it back to us without having to file another application. How's that sound?
So, hold on.
Does that sound right?
I just want to clarify the procedural question again. So there's a motion, motion to adjourn it or postpone it, and it comes back to us in a month or two, it's not a new variance, it's the same variance request, correct? We're not going to rewrite the variance request?
No, the, as it's printed in the agenda, would remain.
But, but potentially, if this were to happen, we would be considering granting a lesser variance.
That's, that's, based on the discussion I'm hearing, it sounds like that could be possible, and you could consider a lesser variance, and staff would, I'm thinking this through, too, so, in order to, so the closing deadline for the June meeting passed, over a week ago. So if they wanted to be eligible for the June meeting, we would need something definitive very quickly, because we're at the point where we're finalizing our entire June agenda, that includes all the exhibit. So if any member of the public, once that goes public, if this item's on it, it's got to be on it completely for the June agenda, which means they would need time to do whatever they think they need to do to submit additional things, so we can do that on a timely basis. So realistically, I think this through, and I haven't consulted with the applicant, but it appears that if they aren't ready to provide those items within the next few days, this would likely be on the July agenda. It wouldn't make the June agenda, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Have I answered your question?
You did answer my question. Mr. Desmond, I think you had your hand up?
I just had a question as far as, for the motion on the table, is there any amendment that could be made that postpones that vote, so we don't have to?
I think the cleanest way would either be, would be to vote on it, vote on the amendment, the motion we have now.
Just asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Yeah, so if I understand two things. First, if I understand it, essentially, the, what we would do is vote it down, which leaves the item on the table, but the motion to deny, voted down, which would allow us to either later bring up a new motion to approve, or another new motion to deny. We can table it for two months to allow the homeowner enough time to provide the materials That said, I have another question for the homeowner, which will influence my decision on that, if I may.
Just speaking to the mic, sir.
So, you said that you would need an additional, that you only have seven feet from the house without a variance?
Correct.
And my question is, I don't see that on paper, how is, how is that the case? I see approximately, skip the roof line and the extra foot, right, so dropping off 6.66 feet from the 16 feet, right, so that would give you, so that would be about like seven and a half, eight feet, right, so that's what we're talking about, like bare minimum squeezing the tub in?
Right, yes.
And rerouting the electrical six feet away somewhere within it, sort of laterally to the wall. But, but it would fit.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't shoehorn a seven-foot tub into a seven-foot room, I wouldn't even build it, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't build it. I would just, you know, not, not do my construction project and make other arrangements.
I understand. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just want to make, just very, very clear, if, sir, sir, if you could just come back a second.
I'm sorry, I spoke into, I was speaking to Mr. Green, I'm sorry.
I just want to make very clear that if the sense of the board is to do what we're talking about, are you amenable to adjusting your proposal to, for a lesser variance? Because I don't, I don't want to waste anybody's time or your time if you're not willing to do it, I just want to make sure that's what you're willing to do.
Yeah, I'd be willing to adjust it, but I, obviously, I would need something a little more than seven feet, or I might have seven and a half, you know, without a variance, you know, we're talking inches here. But if I, without a variance, I would not go ahead with the project, but I would be willing to reduce and see if I can rearrange how it's laid out, and how we might lay that room out, and the electrical components where the disconnect box has to be, and that such it all has to be kind of readjusted.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak to the homeowner? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Just, I would, the next item after this is a public hearing, I would recommend you and your builder stick around, because it's very educational for what, what we're dealing with in terms of making this variance, and why this concern about minimizing the amount of the variance is relevant.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me know that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I do have one further question for the city staff, if they're able to answer this. I want, I want to clarify, I guess to the best of your understanding, if the board were to deny the motion to deny, that we are not bound, if we come back, to later deny the variance, that we're not acting on the motion now and denying it, and therefore we are not, we are precluded in the future from potentially denying it?
The motion could be raised.
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion could be brought up again. I think it would be slightly different, because I think the next time the denial, for the reasons now are stated, I think the reasons next time would be different in that, you know, the you could include in your response, or in your reasoning for the motion, that you did provide an opportunity for the applicant to do certain things, and that was not done. And so based on the standards that are set out and the opportunity given to the applicant, the board is not satisfied, and so it would be slightly different reason for a denial, so that the board could raise that in a motion at the next opportunity, and it would still be permissible.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Evans, did you want to say something?
And if I understand your question correctly, Mr. Chair, reading the direction the board may go in, that may be different than the motion on the floor, is your question relative to this particular request, or perhaps in anticipation of a revised request, should things go in that direction?
I'm, I'm just trying to think out loud and say, if, if the homeowner were to come back, make an effort to ask for a more limited variance, and yet did, still didn't have enough support from the board, that we weren't somehow precluded because we've already said we're not going to not grant it?
Oh, I see, and I agree with what Assistant City Attorney said, it's going to be, we anticipate a different amount.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so we now have to deal with the pending motion from Mr. Green, which is to deny. So a no vote would be to...
Not deny.
To not deny. A yes vote would be to deny the variance. Is that clear enough? Okay. So, Mr. Evans, we are ready to vote?
Okay. It's a motion to deny. Mr. McCauley?
I vote no.
Said no? Did you say no?
No.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Mr. Kencrey?
No.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
No.
Mr. Green? Okay, we have five yeses and four, or excuse me, three yeses, four nos, so the motion does not pass.
So the motion to deny has been rejected, so now we are back to square one, and we'll be prepared to hear another motion. Mr. McCauley?
Yes, at this time, I would, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item, resolve that the variance request for the applicant at the location of 233 Nottingham, for the request of the setback variance be postponed, so that way he can rework the variance request to minimize the depth of his project.
Second.
Motion for Mr. McCauley to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Desmond. Unless there's further discussion, we can vote on, Mr. Evans?
And just to clarify for the motion maker in a second, that this would be to the next scheduled meeting in June, correct?
You said it was too late for it.
It's all, just about to, yes, there's days at most.
My question, it'd be up to the homeowner if he could have everything prepared for you in time for the June meeting?
Right.
If he can't, then it would be a July meeting.
Well, we can do, yeah, and then what we would do is just put it on the agenda, and I would, we wouldn't hear that, we'd postpone it again.
Okay.
If I may, for purposes, I guess, to keep the record and the motion people, I think July would be the best course action for this board, obviously, the board could make that decision, but I think that that would, for notice reasons and other reasons as well at times, I think it would make sense to do July.
I concur. I think July is the safest, the best.
I agree.
Just so it's clear to everyone, including the homeowner, enough time to do what they think they need to do.
Would you like that in motion?
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
Well, hold on a second. We now have a motion that's been seconded.
From the amended.
Amended?
Yeah.
We can amend it.
I, I move to amend the motion as presented, and to add the phrase "to the July meeting" of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, then, Mr. Desmond. So are we voting on the amendment and then the motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
This is our Robert's Rules of Orders, fun night. Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion to amend, to clarify that it's going to be in July, that's what we're going to vote on now. So, Mr. Evans, a yes would be to amend to July, a no would to not amend to July. So, Mr. Evans?
Thank you. Ms. Chambers?
I believe yes.
Mr. Kencrey?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
All right, motion's been amended to adjourn to the July meeting. Now let's vote on, vote on the amended motion. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kencrey?
Yes.
All right, motion to adjourn to the July meeting has been passed, so we will, that'll conclude our business for this case until July, so we will move on from 5A. As mentioned, we are not hearing 5B tonight, that has also been taken off the agenda, so we will move on to item 6, which is communications. Any communications, Mr. Evans?
In the, at the days, you all received a copy of a publication that the Chair was kind enough to provide, Untangling the Practical Difficulties and Unnecessary Hardships, so this is from an issue of Michigan Planner, yes.
Oh, wow.
So that is the communication, and at perfect timing, so that's additional training on top of what we're going to have later tonight.
Yeah, just to add to that, I noticed this in one of our recent Michigan Planners that we are often provided when we show up, and it seemed like a very helpful article that walks through the principles and ideas and how to apply the requirements for dimensional variances, use variances, so I just would commend it to my colleagues, if you have a few minutes, to just read it, I think it's helpful to help us in our work. So, all right. We are now on to item number 7, which we have two miscellaneous business items tonight. The first is the election of Board Chair and Vice Chair since it's May, and according to our rules, we are required every May or thereabouts to... And according to our rules, we are required every May or thereabouts to elect new Chair and Vice Chair. And then secondly, we have, from the City Attorney's Office, Ms. McMillan is going to give us some helpful refreshers and training and updates on ZBA law. So, yeah, Mr. Eisenbacher?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint our existing Chair and Vice Chair because as was demonstrated this evening, did a great job covering the Robert's Rules and reading the, the notice to the, to the audience.
Second.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher, seconded by Mr. Green. I'm more than willing and happy to continue to serve. That's the consensus of the board. So unless there's any discussion, Mr. Eisen, or Mr. Desmond, I think is similarly willing?
Yes. Normally, we'd ask first, but.
So I think we're ready to vote unless there's further discussion on renewing our, our appointment.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much to my colleagues. Look forward to serving another year, hopefully, and appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Evans?
And before we start our next item, would the board like to take five minutes just to get something to drink and refresh?
I think that'd be a great idea. So we will adjourn for about five minutes or so.
Kind of give you the Cliff Notes versions of the slides. And then, obviously, you can read the entire slide. And if there's any questions or concerns, Mr. Evans and I would be happy to address those. So as we're going through this, just raise your hand whenever, if you do have any questions or concerns about anything in the material, and we'll deal with it right away. And then keep going through until the end. All right? Go. All right. So we're starting here with the creation of the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is required by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. According to Article 15 of the Troy's, City of Troy zoning ordinance, that's where a lot of the responsibilities and duties of this board lie. In the ordinance, we have it set out that there's seven members, two alternates, and that one member must also be a part of the planning commission. Thank you. So there's several things that the zoning board of appeals is tasked with doing. And they include considering dimensional or non-use variances, different interpretations of the zoning ordinance or the zoning map, and then appeals of administrative decisions as well as use variance requests as well. So those are some of the responsibilities of this board. And we will be going into detail regarding each of these and the different standards that apply in the later slides. When the board is voting on a dimensional variance, we need a majority of votes. So that would be, we would need four votes in order for a dimensional variance to be granted. When voting on a use variance, we need 2/3 of the members, which would be five votes. So that the standard for, or the amount of votes required for use variance is higher than that that is required for a dimensional variance. Variances give someone special permission to technically, I guess, be in violation of the city's zoning ordinance. It's giving someone permission to do something that is explicitly forbidden in the city's ordinance. So it's important that variances are sparingly granted. The reason for that is every time a variance is granted, it undermines the city's ordinance. If anyone can just show up to a meeting and get a variance, then there's really no point of having a city ordinance that precludes these type of things when essentially they're going to be allowed. So it's important that when this board is considering variances, we're looking at all of the standards which are going to be outlined here in a few slides, and really holding the applicant accountable to each and every standard in order to be able to grant the variance that's being requested. Variance requests do require public hearings, and this board is required to make findings of fact and apply those facts to the standards that we will go over in order to make a decision. A variance, if granted, will run with the land. So if that property owner moves, that variance request stays. And so it is something that is almost permanent. It's not temporary with just whoever is in the home. If denied, a request cannot be resubmitted for at least a year, which I think is something we grappled with just a few minutes ago with our last application. And specifically, most variance requests are dimensional variances. Those are primarily what this board sees. And I know that's also indicated in the handout that was provided in addition to this PowerPoint. That's primarily what this board is tasked, or that does, is hear dimensional variances. So diving into dimensional variances. Dimensional variances deal with a use that is permitted by the zoning district, but it doesn't meet either the setback or area, height, location, or some type of other requirement that's listed in the zoning ordinance. So the standard that we use for dimensional variances is practical difficulties. And in later slides, I'm going to go into great detail every element that's included in what a practical difficulty would entail. But just for this cursory slide here, that is the standard that we apply when we're discussing dimensional variances. This board could attach conditions or safeguards if it does decide to grant a variance. So it doesn't have to be a straight grant or a straight denial. There could be certain conditions. In those conditions, however, it must be tied specifically to the variance request, not the homeowner or the person making the request. And then the variance should be the minimum amount necessary, which I think is also something that impressed, some of you guys read before coming in tonight and mentioned during the meeting. When you are granting a variance, it's important to look at, is there any lesser way of having this done so that we don't have to grant such a large variance request? So that's something to consider when you're looking at the dimensional variances. So diving into, I guess, what is practical difficulty? There are certain, these elements listed here, there's five of them. These five elements are what you consider to determine whether or not there is a practical difficulty. So each of these elements are listed here, and then I'm actually going to go into each one separately and individually as well to kind of show you guys some examples and hopefully help you understand a little bit better. But this sheet here also does break that down as well for you and kind of gives you another, a way of looking at it. If I'm not making sense, maybe the sheet may. So we will go ahead. The elements here, again, the, there's exceptional characteristics of the property that make it more difficult than the great majority of properties in the same area. So we have the exceptional characteristics element is the first one. Next one is that it's related to the physical premises. Thirdly, it's not, the, the variance is not personal in nature. Fourth, that the need for variance is not created by the owner or the previous owner. And then fifth, the variance would not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area, increase congestion, diminish property value in the area, impair the public health, safety, and welfare. So when you're considering practical difficulty, all of these exceptions need to be met in order for you to be able to say that there is a practical difficulty. If you cannot, if any one of these is not able to be proven, then we do not have a practical difficulty. And unfortunately, we will not be able to grant the variance. So when you're looking at this, you need to look at each and every single element and kind of like a checklist and check off that we are able to show based on the evidence that's presented, that each of these are satisfied. If all of them are satisfied, we then have practical difficulty. And at that point, you can consider, is this the minimal necessary? And then if so, the board could consider granting the variance. However, if we do not have all of these elements, a variance should not be granted. So we'll go ahead now and just kind of delve into each of the elements or the factors that the board considers, one by one, just to kind of make them a little bit more clear. So the first one we have is the exceptional circumstance consideration. Under this one, certain, it may include in a regularly shaped parcel, a parcel that is unusually small or narrow, a parcel that is affected by environmental features such as large trees that cannot be removed, or topographical features such as wetlands. These are certain exceptional circumstances. There are other ones, I think, but these are common ones that would make, make, or satisfy this criteria, that there are exceptional circumstances. So again, if there's nothing exceptional or unusual about this parcel, when compared to the other parcels in the same zoning district, we're not able to prove exceptional circumstance. And at that point, then, because we're not able to satisfy that first checklist item, the variance should not be granted in this, in this instance. Moving on to the next, oh, and then I do recall at the last training that Mr. Motz needed for this board, he did bring up the Pegasus case, and I only wanted to mention it because at that time, it was in front of the Court of Appeals and there was, it could but, had potentially had a big impact on the analysis that this board was going to have to make for dimensional variances. However, the, based on the recent Michigan Supreme Court's opinion, the current standards that we have in place are still okay, they're still good. And so I just wanted to bring that up in case some of you guys were wondering what happened with that, because it would have changed how we looked at things. But the Supreme Court overturned the Court of Appeals. And so now it's kind of the same way we've been looking at it, and nothing will need to change based on that case. So I only just bring that up in case any of you guys happen to remember that it was brought up with the last training. But if you don't, then you forget I said anything. So going into that second factor, when considering what a practical difficulty is, the variance has to be related to the premises. So this, an example of this would be if, if a neighboring, neighboring property has an unusual characteristic, that characteristic would not support a request for a variance for the subject property unless that subject property also had that same characteristic. And so if somebody in a neighborhood, if their neighbors all have this unique thing, but this specific property doesn't, then it's not, you're not able to satisfy this factor because it's not related to this specific premises. So that's something I know that a lot of times will come up in applications, or is that, you know, my neighbor's got a variance because their property was like this, and so now they have this deck, but I want this deck too, but it's not their property that we were discussing before, and they don't have those same set of circumstances. And so we need to make sure that what we're reviewing is related to this specific property where the variance is being requested. The third factor that this board considers is whether or not the variance is of a personal nature. So that means that the variance needs to be related to the land itself. So personal reasons that would not justify a variance would include financial reasons, such as not being able to afford to move to another home, or being able to make more money if the variance were granted. Those are personal reasons for requesting a variance as opposed to a, a request that has to deal specifically with the land itself. So, and I guess it's difficult too, when it, when it comes to, if, if somebody comes in with a disability or an illness and wants to have a variance for those reasons, needing to accommodate potentially something along those lines. It, I know it's difficult because it's hard to say no under those set of circumstances. But again, that's a personal thing, and sometimes it's easy, it helps to think about, these variances, if granted, they run with the land. So this person can, may or may not come and go from this property. And so if we grant this variance to them for a personal reason, for some reason, they need it. They need a hot tub in the backyard because it helps with their back, because they have back issues, for instance. They may not live there forever. And then whatever variance is granted by this board, that will stay on that property for the entirety of the time that that property is there. So it's important to try to disconnect the personal reasons that may come forth, although difficult, I understand. It's really important that this board try to just look at the property itself and not the applicant and the reasons that the applicant may really want to have this done. So again, I know it's easier said than done, but it is one of the elements that is required for, when considering practical difficulty. So the fourth one, we're almost there, only one more after this. The fourth factor when considering practical difficulty is that the need for the variance cannot have been self-created. And this makes me think of a lot of instances where people ask for forgiveness rather than permission. So that would be somewhat self-created if they already put it in and are now coming to this board, or already have done, you know, whatever the specific violation is. Now they're coming to the board and requesting the variance because it's already been done. At that point, that would be the best example of a self-created hardship. They made this hardship for themselves by, whether it's they failed to read the ordinance first, or whether they just didn't care and were hoping they didn't get caught one way or the other. Unfortunately, that's something that they created by not dotting their i's and crossing their t's. And so just because they've already kind of dug themselves in, that does not justify a granting of the variance. And so that's another instance where unfortunately, if, if they did that and created their own hardship, yes.
You could finish your thought, I just wanted to ask a question.
No, so it just, that was really the thing. If this is something they created on their own, then we are not able to establish practical difficulty. And so this board would, would need to deny the variance request.
My, my, my brief question is, how far back do we need to go? Because I think it says, current owner or previous owner? Is it a previous owner or is it the previous owner? I mean, in other words, are we required to, if at any point in the history of the property, a previous owner did the thing, does that mean that that doesn't, that's not satisfied?
Well, the ordinance doesn't say. So I think it's reasonable for the board to determine if a predecessor in title or a previous owner created a condition, that now someone who bought the property, wants to develop, relies on that condition. I think it's situational. For example, I remember one variance, we had property that was platted in 1922, before there was, I'm not even sure there was zoning in Michigan. So in that instance, the board at that time thought it was reasonable for the property conditions, even though it was created by whoever platted it. But on the other hand, and that's not just to say it's because of the deed, but it's all situational.
Yeah. A decent number of the, the items that come before us were before the city had zoning.
Yes, and I think under those set of circumstances, that wouldn't, I, I would, it's up to this board, obviously, to make those decisions, but I don't know that you can necessarily hold it up against the homeowner necessarily if it was done before, you know, there was a zoning ordinance that specifically precluded it. I think it's, it's more so, and obviously, it's to this board's discretion, but I, I, when I think of self-created hardship, I think of somebody who either flagrantly ignored the ordinance or read it and didn't care. To me, those are, are very clear examples of self-created hardships.
And then, and then she said, maybe they made a mistake and didn't do accurate work. I've had calls from people that said, you know, I just had the Asbilt done, this foundation we just poured, and we're five feet off. I don't know how it happened, it's never happened. Well, you're supposed to, you know, we rely on you and you rely on yourselves to do things the right way.
Mr. Fox, go ahead. I'm sorry, I did it again. Mr. Green.
So, he'll be back next month.
All right. No confusion next month, sorry.
That's fine. The, unless I misreading, and this is where it gets tricky, and I understand it is up to us, the phrasing is, must not have been created by the current or a previous, and that's the letter, that's the wording. So we are, we are treating the, the word "a" ambiguously and situationally. And that is, that is the direction of, of the city. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you have flexibility there. It's just like we consider all variances on the merits of their own.
Yep. I guess my, my follow-up question or comment would be, we do often hear, or sometimes hear variance requests where the builder built something a certain way, and they were the previous owner, you know, or the, or the immediate, and, and, you know, they built the house the way they wanted to build it.
Yeah.
And it wasn't intentional per se, but, you know, that's, it's not the, the current owner may not have done it, but it was built that way by the, by the builder who built the house or the previous owner.
Well, and unfortunate, and under this element, an intent, there's no intent necessarily required. You can unintentionally create a hardship. So in, in that specific instance, if the builder did not follow, you know, the, the ordinance or was off, then even if accidentally, that still would be a self-created hardship. They created that hardship, whether intentionally or not, and that's kind of what I was trying to get at too. Sometimes they are intentional, unfortunately. It's the old, ask for forgiveness, more over permission type of thing. But then again, also, sometimes accidents happen, and it's still self-created. They created that hardship accidentally or intentionally, but one way or the other, it's, it's half of once, a dozen of, six dozen of the others, either way. So that would be unfortunately, a self-created hardship. And if that's the case, then the board would be precluded from granting the variance. If the owner, this board determines the previous owner, however far back the board is inclined to look back, if, if the, if they created the hardship, then we are unable to authorize a variance under these set of circumstances.
For example, it's the case we had, if a builder has built a triangle to the rear yard, setback, like there's no room for rendition.
Or, or deck.
Go have deck.
Or a deck.
Or a deck, in some cases, yes. So would that be, that could definitely be a reason to say a self-created hardship.
Caveat emptor is the ultimate, let the buyer beware is the ultimate.
You know, that's one thing I think is very fair for this board to consider.
Okay.
If you invested in that house, were you aware, couldn't you become reasonably aware of your limitations?
All right. And we're in the last element here of what we are, are the last factor when we're considering dimensional variances. And this is whether the variance would be harmful to the character or the area. Specific considerations include, but are not limited to, whether or not the variance would impair the light or air to adjacent properties, unreasonably increase congestion on public streets, increase the danger of fire, or endangers the public safety, unreasonably diminishes or impairs established property value within the surrounding area, or in any way impairs public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. So this again is a consideration that is required when considering if there's a practical difficulty or not. So that's the fifth and final one. We made it, all the, through all the factors. And now what we'll go ahead and talk about is the burden of the applicant. It is, they're, they must have, have substantial evidence. So their, the practical difficulty must be supported by substantial evidence. Substantial evidence means that a reasonable person would accept the evidence as sufficient to support a conclusion. So here's, I just wanted to go through, I'm not going to go through each bullet point, but a couple of them. A statement and support should be based on information or material provided by the applicant, city staff, or members. So when this board is considering supporting a variance, it should again be based on information that is provided during the meeting, that this board has. And it could come from the applicant, information given from the applicant, or from Mr. Evans' presentation, any neighbors who want to come forth and bring any evidence. You may also consider if you do a site visit, sharing that information with the rest of the members on the board. But this, your decision should be based only on that information, information that everybody has to consider. The, the board may consider public comment as relevant evidence, but unsubstantiated or speculative public comment does not provide competent evidence to grant or deny. So if a member says, I think this will decrease the value of my house if you allow this to happen, that could be speculative. And so unless there's something they have that's a little bit more concrete than that, then, then it's not technically considered to be competent evidence to consider. So just people throwing out thoughts and ideas or worries and concerns that are not quite established by concrete evidence would not, would not be able to be a consideration to amount to substantial evidence. Yeah.
What is the proper protocol for a site visit? Does it have to be arranged through the city, or what is the proper way to go?
Yeah. So I'm glad you asked, and I do have a slide on that. But I can, I'll just jump ahead and answer that question while we're thinking about it.
Did everybody hear the question?
His question was the proper protocol for site visits. What is that arranged through the city, or how is it done? So it's my understanding that, that you guys were provided city badges, is that correct? So if you would like to do a site visit, then you would, you could reach out to Mr. Evans, and he could try and set up a dime.
We can give you a badge?
Yes. So you can reach out to Mr. Evans, and he can try to set up a time and a, with the applicant, or you can take your, and I would recommend taking your badge with you, just so they don't think it's a stranger danger showing up at their house. It could be a little alarming, I think, for them. However, if you're not able to, to get into contact, you can arrive at the residence and knock on the door, introduce yourself, not have any conversations with the applicant, but simply just say, I'm here, I would like to look at the property if that's okay with you. If they try to engage in conversation, just let them know at this time, you know, I'm sorry, I can't talk about this right now, but I'd love to hear what you have to say at the meeting, in front of all my colleagues. And so you can either have it set up through the city, we'd be happy to do that for you, or if you would, if you do, just show up on the site, just make sure to bring your badge and ask for permission.
Yeah, knock on the door, let them know you're there. There could be a dog outside, or like Nikki said, they're scared, they're calling the police now, there's someone they don't know is in the backyard. And as Nikki also said, what I recommend is, one way to handle the objection, because I don't want to tell you all about this. Unless you have a question, like what are these stakes, we can do a stakeout. A good way to handle an objection, when someone wants to speak, is saying, it's appropriate that all my colleagues hear the same information at the same time. So with all respect, please just answer my questions, and then if you want to add, you can say it for me.
And so we'll get a little bit more into site visits as well. But just when we're going through again, the substantial evidence that's required to establish, establish a practical difficulty, if you are denying a variance, there must be obviously a finding that any one or more of the elements were not met. If they are able to establish a practical difficulty, then this board has an obligation, and it's supported by substantial evidence, this board does have an obligation under those standards to grant the variance. However, if one or more, again, is not met, then the variance request should be, must be denied. Another thing, the variant, oh, I'm sorry, was that a question? Yeah, go ahead.
I guess this is kind of a comment, and maybe, in my mind, maybe people disagree, but to me, I think it would be a good practice when members of the board make motions to grant, to state the substantial evidence that they think supports each of those criteria for the record, so that if, you know, if we grant or deny that a, if it's taken to circuit court, or what have you, it's in there in the record what we're relying on.
Uh, yes. And then, yeah, go ahead.
That's why we have the templates at the beginning.
Exactly what I just looked to, yes.
Because that's one of the things that I wanted, because I want to make sure that when we do this, that we have information that they can point to, and that has gone, we've had things go to circuit court, and they've come back and said, no, their findings are right, they're, follow their practical difficulties right down the list, and it doesn't meet the criteria.
So I, yes, and I think to that point, we do have the template that spells out each of the factors. I think to the chair's point, it's good to plug specific information into each of those factors. So for instance, I'm looking at the template right now, and it says that the applicant has demonstrated that exceptional characteristics exist. And so, and then it kind of gives some examples of what exceptional characteristics are, but it would be up to whoever's making the motion to specifically state what exceptional characteristics are present in this case. And then same with the next element, or the next factor, that is specific to the property, would need to be addressed, in that it's not of a personal nature, which some of these things, it either is or is not, there's not a lot of like, well, you know, when you're talking about, is it of a personal nature or not? It really is or it isn't. But when you're talking about exceptional characteristics, that's more of a broad, what, what is exceptional about this property? So that kind of requires a little bit of an elaboration when making a motion. Uh, yeah.
Uh, to that, would it, would it be possible, this is more of a request, would it be possible for, for you or the attorney's office to provide a slight modification on our template that is essentially a little bit of fill-in-the-blank, like a, does not fulfill, A, the verbiage, then such as, important, in this specific case, or some way that we can more easily plug that in with, without having to sort of create phrasing on the fly? We've got this good starter, and obviously, it's going to be case by case, but some way to, like a good spot to plug, plug information here.
So the other thing too, I mean, we would be happy to take a look, but if there's something that anyone on this board specifically would like to see changes or tweaks made to it that would make it easier, we could also have that submitted to, to city administration. And we would be happy to kind of tweak our template. And we would be happy to kind of tweak our template if there's revisions from anybody on this board that you think would make your job easier. That's all we're here for. That's all we really want to do, is to support you and this board and make the job easier. So we do have the templates, both to deny and to grant, in here, albeit a little wordy, as you indicated, so maybe if it's not reader-friendly, or it's not easy for this board to use, if there's any revisions, we would be happy to.
We could consider it.
Yeah.
And then on that note, and I didn't ask Nikki this question, so she might say something different, but sometimes when we make the resolutions, so for example, in the morning, I know in previous trends, you had, really, you need to find one thing, one thing isn't met, that's all you need. And I think it's reasonable to paraphrase, I mean, some of the, Mr. Green, he's not even an excellent job of reading it verbatim, but you know, the item J, or the last one, is really long. And if members of the public are less aware, you're like, "What are you talking about?" I'm not surprised, because I think it's reasonable, if it's clear, to paraphrase those, if it becomes too wordy for people to follow. But we just want to make sure that everyone here knows, including the Circuit Court chair, knows why you want to add to it. But I can talk to you, we can talk tomorrow or later this week about thoughts on that.
Yeah.
I have to focus on ideas for that.
Anyone on the board, if there's something that you would like to see, reach out to Paul or myself, and we'd be happy to tweak the template to make it so that it's easier, more user-friendly for you if it's not currently. So just let us know about that, we'd be happy to do it. Let's see, where was I? Oh, just a few more when we're talking about substantial evidence. A variance should not be granted solely because nobody from the public objected. So just because there's no objection from neighbors, or nobody from the public comes in, that doesn't mean that, okay, everybody, you know, you can consider that everybody loves this idea because nobody said no, so okay, we'll do it. That really doesn't necessarily always mean that. Sometimes people just don't respond to it, or sometimes, you know, whatever the case may be. But just because nobody from the public objects doesn't mean that all of the other elements are met, or the other requirements are met. And so that, while it could be one consideration of many, it shouldn't be the only consideration when you're determining whether or not to grant a variance. And then I guess the inverse is true as well, that a variance shouldn't be denied strictly because several members of the public objected. If those objections are speculative, or if somehow you're able to still satisfy all of those five considerations, despite the objections, or because there's people in the audience that don't want this variance to be granted, if you're still able to somehow show that each of the factors are satisfied by substantial evidence, then you can still grant the variance. So I guess both sides of the coin are true here, whether just because nobody shows up doesn't mean it's, you can grant it without any other considerations, and just because people object doesn't mean you should reject it without any other considerations as well. It's just one factor of many that this board gets to consider when making its final decision. And again, the proposed, as indicated earlier, the variance must be as minimum as necessary. So after the hearing is conducted, the board may grant a lesser variance. So they bring their application, and they want, they're asking for, you know, this much. The board can say, "Actually, we'll give you this much," or again, the board can say, "Come back with a different plan." But if the board tonight wanted to say, "We won't give you all of that, but we will give you some of that," the board can do that, and there would not need to be a separate hearing date, or a separate notice, or separate anything. But if he came up here and said, or anybody came up and said, "I want this," you know, their application said they want this much, but then they came up, and they're like, "Actually, I was, I think I actually really need this much," that's a completely different set of circumstances, where then we would want the neighbors to have notice of that. And so it would definitely not be able to be considered at that immediate meeting, because the neighbors here think that he's coming for one thing, and then if he's coming for something completely different and more, that's something that we need, they're obligated to have an opportunity to be informed of and to weigh in if necessary. So when we're talking about the variance, if this board felt comfortable granting the variance because all of the other elements were met except for that this board believes that it could be less, then this board can say, "We will grant your variance, but we're only granting it for this lesser amount." Yes.
I think Mr. Eisenbacher mentioned this, but I do think we have to be careful about not designing
Yes.
the, whatever they want to do, sort of on the spot with the applicant. I think it's up to them to determine what they want to do with the variance that we end up granting.
That is true. I would, I guess, caution this board to steer clear of doing the designing. However, if there's something that this board could be comfortable with that is less than what's being asked, then I think this board can indicate maybe that they're not comfortable with the amount that's being asked, but it seems likely that there's a lesser amount that could be asked that this board would be willing to consider. I think that's vague enough that it would be permissible. However, going into extensive detail on, if you came back and did this, this, and this, I think we would definitely, you know, we would grant this, kind of then put you in a pickle for when they come back and they've done everything you've said, and then if they ultimately get denied, they get upset, because you told me that if I did all these things, and if this was, you know, this happened, then I would, you would be, I would, this would get granted, and I had all this hope, and it didn't happen. And so to give them specific things to do to come back in front of this board is not advisable. However, if it's something general, like a reduction in the request, or something along those lines, that is, that could be within this board's purview, if so inclined. Yeah.
The example, when you asked the applicant tonight, David, and he said, "Well, I have to go back, I have to look at, I got to figure it out." If he would've said, "You know what, I could do 10 feet, and I'd be happy with that." And he offers something like that, and then we're happy with that?
Yes.
I could see where that, we're not designing it, he's saying that he's happy with it, but he didn't say that, he said, "I have to go back and look at." Well, no, we don't want to get into designing, but if he offered, "Look, I can get away with 10 feet, if you guys give me 10 feet, I can do that." And I think that's the thing that we're looking at, or 5 feet, or whatever, you know, you needed. So I agree with you, though, we don't want to be designing it, but to have that flexibility, you know, we could go smaller, but he's got to be agreeable to it.
That's right.
If he's not agreeable to it, I wouldn't push the issue, I'd make him redo it, so they're designing what they want, what they need.
I think that's a good comment.
Yeah.
And then I think this is the last slide, specifically on these type of variances, and just, the next couple slides are just sample motions that I will go, those will be super quick. But with this one, as I indicated earlier, the board can place conditions on variances. Such conditions would have to protect or promote the public health and welfare, and also must be reasonable and related to the land. So there is an example, it could be a condition that the owner provide a landscape berm to obstruct the view of a structure, or also require verification from the city engineer that the new structure would not cause drainage issues, or certain things along those lines. So if this board has concerns that somehow granting the variance, you know, would have some, an impact, but it could be easily remedied by putting up a berm, or following up with the city engineer, then it could be a conditional grant, which, it's not always as neat, obviously, but it is permissible, it is within this board's purview. If there are certain conditions that this board could put in place that would make it feel, make this board feel comfortable, that all the elements are satisfied with those conditions in place, then that is something this board can do. But again, it can get a little tricky when there are conditions, and it's important that these conditions are set in place to protect the public health and welfare, be reasonable, and specifically deal with the land itself, not something, you know, to do with the applicant making the request. So.
Arboretis in perpetuity.
What's that?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
It would have to be like landscaping, for example, it's like, you can have four feet if you plant arborvitis forever, because it runs with the land.
Right. So now, getting into these sample motions here, we kind of just put this in here, there's a sample motion granting the variance, and so in this sample motion, which is what we have in our packet now, it says that, it goes through each of the five requirements, and so the first one, that there's an exceptional circumstance here, it says, "There was an unusual shape of the lot." The next one, that it deals specifically with this property and not some other property. So it says that, you know, this unusual shape deals with this property and not some other property, and that it was not created on number three, and for a personal reason. It's specifically for a reason that has to do with the property. And then the self-created hardship is number four, it says here, you know, it wasn't self-created. And then the last one is that, you know, it wouldn't have any harmful effects on the character of the area. So this motion right here is gold. It goes through each of the elements, discusses each of the elements, and if we can make some kind of record like this on every single case, that definitely would help down the line, should there be any appeals, which I will discuss appeals in a slide coming up shortly. Once we get to denying, here, this we have, this one's denying because the first one, there's no exceptional circumstances. So simply stating, "I move to deny," and literally, like I, you know, we would mention, you only need one reason out of those five to deny. So you can name more than one, if there's more than one, but this could be a motion if there's no exceptional circumstances. So I kind of highlighted to show you here, if there were no exceptional circumstances, this would be a great template for you to use for a motion to deny. And this one, if it's not based specifically on the characteristics of the property that we're discussing on the application, here's a sample denial that just essentially says that the structure for the adjacent property was based on characteristics of that property, not this property, and so it shows that we're not dealing with the physical premises that before this board. This is, here, there's the third element, isn't met, that it's not, it's of a personal nature, so the applicant has not provided any evidence that the need for the variance is based on exceptional circumstances, or that the property, the request is of a personal nature. This one is a self-created, you can deny it because the hardship was self-created, and it's kind of language that outlines that. And then lastly, this one would be if the variance would somehow be harmful to the area, you know, whether it creates congestion, or whatever the case may be, here's a sample motion denying it for that reason. So now moving into use variances. With use variances, this allows the owner of a property to engage in activities on their property that are otherwise prohibited by the zoning code. And so this is different from dimensional, whereas on that, the use of the property is in compliance, just the dimensions are not in compliance. This one is where the, how they want to use the property is not in compliance with the city's ordinance. Here, the standard, before we had practical difficulty, now we have unnecessary hardship. That is the standard that we're considering for these type of applications. So the factors for that, which are also on the back of this sheet as well that was provided to us, but it's that the applicant cannot reasonably use the property for uses allowed under the zoning district, and you can require professional documentation to support this assertion. The condition or situation of the property is unique and not commonly present in the general vicinity. The land conditions make it impossible to earn a reasonable, earn a reasonable return without adjustment, and it's again, reasonable return, not highest return, and it's not dimensional to adjacent land, and sufficient capacity, such as roads and utilities and stuff getting in and out, it's not going to create traffic jams, or power outages, or things like that. There exists sufficient capacity to be able to for this use. And then also, the need for the variance was not self-created by the applicant. So when we talked about self-created before, that was when we were looking back at the previous person. This, now we're just looking at the applicant. So this one, here, we have six different things we're looking at when we're considering unnecessary hardship.
They have to meet them all, right?
And yes, and again, like before, they need to establish each and every one of these, and again, it's the same standard of substantial evidence, so evidence that's credible and not speculative. It's the same kind of evidence that this board needs to consider for use variances. So I really only went over the second factor when we're looking at unnecessary hardship here, to kind of flesh it out. The features or conditions of the land are not generally applicable throughout the zone. So this would include if it were exceptionally narrow, or shallow, or the shape of it is unique, there's something about the shape, or there's exceptional, something about the land and the condition of the land, is it extraordinary? So that was really the only one I delved into, because I feel like there's a lot of overlap between some of the factors with a use variance and a dimensional variance. Site visits, as we mentioned earlier, they are encouraged, there's nothing wrong with it. I actually would encourage if this board does have to, not required, but encouraged, if this board does have time. However, if you do choose to do that, just be mindful of the Open Meetings Act, so when you're doing this, just don't have a discussion, don't allow the applicant to have a discussion with you, that everyone else is not privy to. And then also, don't buddy up with other members on this board and all go together, so that all of you guys are getting information that certain other members are not going. So when you do go, go alone, and minimize your conversations with the applicant, so that way everyone is having that same information. Make sure that you get permission to enter the property, and bring your city ID, just out of abundance of caution. So another thing that this board will do from time to time is hear administrative appeals. This occurs when an applicant disagrees with the decision of our zoning administration. Under those set of circumstances, they have to file an appeal within 30 days after our zoning administration, I guess, would either deny, or whatever they disagree with. They have 30 days to file an appeal that would be heard in front of this board. Generally, once they file the appeal, it stays the decision of the zoning administration. Some of our zoning administration does make a decision, but there's an appeal, that decision will not be acted upon until this board has an opportunity to consider it. So factors, when this board is considering administrative appeals, this board will look at whether the decision was arbitrary and capricious, and/or whether it was based on erroneous findings of material facts, and/or whether the decision was abuse of discretion, and/or whether it was based on an erroneous interpretation of our ordinance or the law. So that's what this board considers if an applicant comes before, the board requesting an appeal of a decision that was made by city administration. The board can ask the applicant for more additional information, follow-up questions, anything that this board needs to know to be able to make a decision on that appeal.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Can a third party ask for administrative appeal on something?
So like a contractor, on behalf of a homeowner?
Let's use this as an example, some condos are going to get built, the planning commission approves it, but the adjacent, I'm sorry, but the adjacent subdivision rejects the notion that it's going in there, because it's violating city ordinances and codes.
Standing is not an easy one to answer, whether they have standing, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, my initial inclination would be that they don't have standing. However, let's say that they, yes.
Sorry, I'm just, pardon. I'm looking at the first point, it says, "When a property owner or a property interest alleges an error of law."
And so I would say, what I would say is, if the, we would take the appeal. And so, I would say, what I would say is, if the, we would take the appeal and put it in front of this board. This board would determine whether or not it was the property owner or interested party. So this board would initially make its own decision on whether or not there was standing or not standing for the applicant to be in front of the board for an appeal.
So you'd bring it to the board and let them decide whether they have standing or not?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay.
If there's any question on interpretations or anything, out of abundance of caution, it's generally our policy to present it to the board and allow the board to make the decision. Unless, obviously, you know, we don't want to deprive anybody of their due process rights or their perceived due process rights. And so, if they believe somehow that they do have due process rights, then, and it's a close call like that, we would bring it to the board and the board could make that determination on whether it was an interested party.
Relative to this slide, I anticipate, someone has applied for administrative appeal for the June meeting. So, I expect that to be on the agenda. And what we've done in the past, we don't give any of these. Typically, what happens is the city attorney's office will put a memo. We don't consider it as very helpful, just to help guide.
Yes. And I think another thing too, obviously, a role of this board is to interpret the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. Not something that occurs all the time. It does happen occasionally though. And so, when doing these type of interpretations, the board must consider the intent and purpose of the city's zoning ordinance, must also consider the master plan. Can only change district boundaries when there's an ambiguity. So if there's no ambiguity, but what the board wants to, unfortunately, we cannot do that. There has to be some kind of ambiguity regarding the boundaries. And then, there is a specific chapter in the zoning ordinance, Chapter 39, Section 4.3, that deals with interpretation of district boundaries. So that whatever interpretation this board makes must be consistent with Section 4.3. The zoning, this board may request that the planning commission initiate an ordinance amendment that would correct or clarify the ordinance as well. So again, this doesn't come up, yes.
Let me ask, what constitutes an ambiguity of a boundary?
That's tough at this point now, since a lot has been fleshed out and over the years. I think it's, there's a lot less gray area.
We've had good luck with following staff, following Section 4.03 that tells us. And right now, we've got a good zoning ordinance, a good zoning map. With that, I've been here since 2008, I'm not sure that's ever happened. And there's previous zoning ordinance, the zoning map is a little different. So, the good news is, the ordinance is written nicely, it shouldn't happen.
Yes. Luckily, you know, as our ordinance has been revised over the years, we've been able to kind of make it more clear with less ambiguity. And so, we, as far as I'm aware, in the very near future, in the past, I can't think of an instance where there has been. But again, it could happen. It could come up, it could be unclear. As best as we try to make everything as black and white as possible, there could be something that's a gray area. And if that were the case, then it would be up to this board to kind of make that determination. But hopefully, you know, if we did our job right, the ordinance is clear enough and that won't be something that is, that comes in front of this board. Okay. So during deliberations, anytime this board is deliberating on any of its responsibilities, you want to avoid discussions, debates, or negotiations with the applicant. Again, you want to avoid redesigning the project or trying to convince the applicant of alternatives if possible. If you're presented with new information or material at the meeting, it's acceptable to postpone to another meeting to have time to review that new material if need be. If you can use the templates when making a resolution and provide a summary of why each standard is or is not met. And again, if the templates in this packet are not satisfactory or you have any ideas on how to make it more effective, please let us know so that we can do that for you. Not necessary to read the agenda verbatim. Try to be as clear and concise as possible. It's acceptable to ask the person making a resolution to provide clarification if you're not sure exactly what their, what their resolution, what they're saying in their resolution. It's also acceptable during discussion to say why you will, why you intend to approve or deny the request during the discussion portion. And then, lastly, be aware of body language. Avoid frowns, gestures, head hanging, dozing off, any of those things. Either during deliberations with your colleagues or when the public is speaking or any of those things, which I don't anticipate as a problem, but just be simple.
No dozing off. No one here's done it on my other board during COVID. Guys falling asleep, and it was still asleep.
Yes.
I've never seen it on this board. You guys are always very aware of what's going on.
Well, there was that void one, right? That went till like 1:00 AM, that was pretty tough. I remember that. It was like three times, right?
So, these next two slides cover the city's ethics ordinance that applies to appointees of boards. And I just kind of pointed out a couple of the important provisions here in the next two slides, which I know that you guys all know how to read. So I'm not going to go through them individually, but again, they're here for you. The ordinance is 14A. If you ever have any questions or concerns when it relates, as it relates to any ethical questions, you can consult that chapter. And then, this slide and the next slide, I just pointed, pulled out some of the requirements that are outlined in the ordinance. So definitely do take time to review that from time to time to ensure that you are in compliance with the city's ethics.
And if I could tonight, what's a great example? The chair, you talk about conflict of interest. He made sure, if you ever think you might have a conflict of interest, one, you can call me to discuss it. I don't necessarily, I'm not going to make the decision. Obviously, it has to be the person who thinks they have a conflict, but disclosure. That way, everyone in the room knows. And if you don't think you have a conflict, but if you do, I'm not saying I can't sit because that guy's my next door neighbor.
Yes.
I'm going to go in there. So excellent example tonight how we used high ethics and avoided being adherent to the conflict of interest, disclosure for everyone in the room.
And that is the next, or the second and next slide that I was going to go on, and it was handled perfectly. So I don't feel like I need to belabor this point because it seems like you guys have a very good grasp on how to handle these situations. And so, nice job on that one. Getting into the Open Meetings Act and FOIA. So we're just getting near the end here. A few more minutes. So, both the Open Meetings Act and FOIA apply to this board because this board is a public body. The intent or the core purpose of both of these is best served through information about the workings of government or information concerning whether a public body is performing its core function. So essentially, transparency is key under both of these, the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. As it relates to the Open Meetings Act, any meeting of a public body shall be open to the public. So there are certain things that I had listed in here that constitute a meeting. I guess, a traditional meeting, but sending emails to reply all to feature, since everybody is involved, that technically fits within the description of a meeting. So you want to make sure not to do that. Social gatherings where we have a quorum, so especially when you're doing site visits, try to do these type of things solo. Or if there's an event out in the public, just make sure we're not meeting with multiple of us. And if there are multiple of us, definitely make sure we're not talking about the meeting or anything along those lines that would violate the Open Meetings Act. And I think those are the two that are most likely to come up that I just would like you to be cautious of so that we don't have any violations of our Open Meetings Act.
What's the quantity for quorum for us?
For this board is four. And then again, under the Open Meetings Act, this slide here, allow, under the Open Meetings Act, individuals are allowed to record or televise or tape or broadcast the meeting. It shall be in an open facility that's easy for the public to access, which here, we have no problem holding our meetings in this location. If there's an unexpected crowd, we must try to accommodate as best as possible, which, you know, I don't think really comes up too often. And I don't foresee us having any issues with the space that we have accommodating a decent amount of people here. All persons shall be permitted to attend and address the public body on any item. So you cannot restrict public comment to residents only. You also can't require that somebody disclose their address. You can ask that they voluntarily disclose their address to help give you an idea of where their property is in relation to other properties to help you deliberate. But it can't be required as part of them speaking that they disclose their address. There, this board is allowed to enact reasonable rules to minimize the possibility of disruption, but these rules should be in writing and uniformly applied. There can be a time limit, but again, this, it must be reasonable and not based on any subject matter. And it has to be uniformly applied and set out in advance of the matter. In the event that a speaker becomes unruly, the chair should provide a warning, if possible beforehand, before taking any adverse action. And if for, if the crowd and/or the speaker does become unruly, it may be beneficial to ask for a recess or go into a recess to give everybody time to calm down and then maybe come back in, after things have settled, the dust has settled. But during the recess, it's important not to discuss any of the matters on the agenda. That's about all on that slide. This slide, not so much relevant anymore because remote attendance was really only a thing during COVID. Now, at this point, it really only applies if any of our members are active military. So, appearing via Zoom if you aren't feeling good or can't make it is a thing of the past. It's under the Open Meetings Act, it's no longer permissible. Similarly, allowing remote participation by members of the public. Our current rules of procedure do not allow for public comment via Zoom or via any other electronic way. However, we do allow members of the public to submit written comments that are summarized into the record. So that's our way of accommodating public comment for members of the public that are not able to make it. So currently, members of the board, members of the public, we're not doing the Zoom-in type stuff anymore at our meetings, under the Open Meetings Act. Once we get to FOIA here, FOIA requires disclosure and access to public records. Public records and what is discoverable under FOIA is a pride broadly to various records. However, there are some exceptions to FOIA. Things that are exempt, that do not have to be turned over. Specifically, as it relates to this board, this board may receive correspondence either from the city clerk's office or the city attorney's office. If we do receive a FOIA request that has to do with anything pertaining to this board, we will let you know. It's important that you respond to that very quickly because there's only a five-day turnaround time for us to be able to produce anything requested under a FOIA request. And while we can get a 10-day extension, it's usually only under extenuating circumstances. So if you hear from anybody, any city administration regarding a FOIA request that we received, if you can respond to that and turn over anything that may be responsive in an expeditious fashion, that would be very helpful for us. On this again, communications received by the board. So if you receive a letter or an email from an applicant or a member of the public, you can respond just saying that this has been forwarded to administration, city administration, but don't engage in this kind of conversation because it's something that we need to have the whole board present for. And then, once city administration does receive this correspondence, we can provide a copy for the entire board to review. So you really want to limit your communication with any applicant or any witness to what we have here and what everybody can hear.
Does everybody have a dedicated email to ZBA? If not, consider getting one.
That's the other thing?
We get a FOIA request, all your personal stuff's not rifling through.
Yes. So, let's say we get a FOIA request for something that relates to any of this board's emails that they've received from, if somebody thinks that you got an email from the applicant and you're, you say, "No, I did not get this email." Well, then they, so we don't turn anything over, they appealed a circuit court. Sometimes in circuit court, a judge will do an in-camera review to ensure that you in fact did not ever receive anything, like you said. So sometimes, that may make you uncomfortable to have a judge going through each and every one of your emails. So, for purposes of keeping your private life private and this board opportunity separate, it might make sense, if you haven't already, to create a separate email address for when you're acting in your capacity as a zoning court of appeals member.
Are we supposed to be keeping things? Because I just delete everything. I mean, my email gets purged on a consistent basis. So like, if that, somebody says, "Hey, what do you, you know, do you have emails relating to the ZBA?" I probably got a couple from this meeting, but like, I mean, but maybe I don't understand.
Yeah, you're not required to keep anything.
Oh, okay.
Like he said, if you do get something from a member of the public and they figures out your email, so if you don't have it online, you afford it, you think you should keep it, you keep it.
All right, just curious.
Sorry, yeah, on that note, I thought at some point we were told, not that it applies to email, but like, if we take notes to ourself during the meeting about the contents of the meeting, we do have to hold those. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
Take notes what?
During the meeting.
Yeah, for ourself, not shared with the board, not public, but pertinent to the discussion. Do we need to keep those?
So he said, if he takes his own personal notes during the meeting, he was advised that those notes need to be maintained or that he needs to hold on to those notes for a period of time. And so, I do believe that there is a certain retention period for emails and for notes. The exact retention period, I cannot recall. I would be able, I'll be able to look up that information and get it back to the board. I think that, to your concern, if you're receiving emails from city administration, we have that on our end. So if you don't have it on your end, it would, you know, it's something we would have. But if you're receiving things from people outside of city administration, because we all have retention guidelines that we know of that we have to abide by. On your end, if you're receiving emails from anybody who's not a part of the city, then I would advise retaining those emails for a certain period. And we can advise on the length of that just for retention reasons. So I can look into exactly what the timeframe is on that, but that goes along with Mr. Green's remark. There are certain things that you and you alone would have that we wouldn't have. So your notes or something that somebody sent you that wasn't part of the city that could be FOIA-able, that you, there is a certain timeframe that needs to be held on to. And so I'll follow up on that for you and get back to the board as a whole on that so that you know the amount of time on that. Lastly, we are on appeals. So, this board makes a decision. It, there's a motion made, seconded, it passes. Or one way or the other, this board makes a decision. There's going to be somebody probably who's upset with it and they are going to want to appeal this board. That appeal goes to the Oakland County Circuit Court. It must be filed 21 days after the meeting minutes are finalized, are approved. So, at the next meeting, 21 days after the next meeting. The appeal must be filed. And then, the judge, listed here, A through D, these are the factors that the judge will consider when reviewing this board's decision. Basically, that the record establishes that this board complied with the Constitution and the laws of Michigan, there was proper procedure, the decision was supported by competent and material substantial evidence on the record, and that this board used reasonable exercise of discretion. And so this, these are the things that the judge will look at in the Circuit Court on an appeal. And again, that's why it's important for this board to make really good records when making its motion, and also during its deliberations. You know, making, this is the evidence that I heard today. I heard that they have exceptional circumstances because of this. I heard that they, that this isn't something that they created, it's not a self-created hardship. I heard this, I heard this, I heard this. And kind of summarizing the evidence, which is how you're reaching your motion, as much of that as we can get on the record, that will help insulate us from any appeal down the road. So it's very important to be thorough when deliberating and making your motions. And then, last but not least, in order to file an appeal, the person needs to be technically an aggrieved person. And per our Supreme Court, in order to be an aggrieved person here, these are the factors, the three factors that are required, that they participated or challenged the decision, either came in for public comment or wrote a letter, that they have some kind of personal or property interest that was affected by the decision of this board, and that there's special damages that are different than the community as a whole that this person faces. So let's say this board does grant a variance and the neighbor is upset, and the neighbor wants to appeal. The neighbor would have to establish that they're an aggrieved person by establishing all of these elements in order for the court to consider their appeal. And that is our last slide. Thank you guys so much for sitting here and being patient and engaging. Are there any questions or anything that I did not cover in this slide that the board has this evening? No? Okay, then, I would, if I were you, maybe laminate this, bring it with you, or don't. This is a very handy little cheat sheet. Also, the PowerPoint, you can keep that for reference too, in a little folder and bring to meetings with you if you want to, or not. Either way, up to you. But there's a lot of good little nuggets in there to help with this board when deliberating and making decisions on whether or not to grant variances and other things. So I hope that you all found this to be beneficial. And again, I do appreciate your patience sitting here in this heat. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one quick question.
Yes.
Was there a change in the updated zoning ordinance for the setback requirements for churches and places of worship? Do you know?
That was, yes, that was, uh... We didn't update the zoning ordinance. So we didn't change the ordinance, but some of those requirements, so we officially put a note in the ordinance that said, a judge, the court ruled that we couldn't enforce those or require those.
Okay.
Does everybody know what he's talking about?
No.
Yeah.
So there's a case where a religious institution wanted to use a property on Rochester Road, former DSW warehouse. Some of you were here for that. And they appealed that case. I don't know if they appealed it, or there was a different legal action, but the court ruled that the setback, couple of the setback requirements that we had specific for places of worship were unconstitutional. We didn't formally remove them from the ordinance, but there's a note in the official copy of the ordinance that says you can't administer, enforce, D and E, or whatever the letters are.
Get a question. With our liaison coming from the Planning Commission, is that person going to be required to see this also? Because I thought this was important information that they would need to look at, because looking at it from a zoning board of appeals position opposed to a planning commission position.
I'm Mr. Fox, I'm here.
So, is it going to be required? I don't think Steph has the ability to require someone. I guess technically the board could require somebody, but really, it's just a best practice. I know Mr. Forster, our alternate, indicated he would be watching from home. He told me that today. And I consider, I'll just remind him, it's very important to do this. And if he thinks he needs to come in to have it done by the attorney's office and I, you know, we do it for new members. So we could give him a refresher, right? Yeah, we can give him a refresher if he wants one.
If he wants one.
I'm glad I'm nosy. That's a cool way to say it. She's trying to find the section.
Well, if he does, we have to put a heater in the room that he's doing it in. Base heater, two of them.
Well, he's, I mean, he's, this is important for him because he doesn't see this, what our rule is. He sees it from a planning position.
Well, maybe we did amend it, because we don't see it now. Anyways, that, yeah, to answer the question. Who asked the question again?
I can't find it.
Get back with the whole board on this, okay?
I can't find it either.
Well, and then, and then, then maybe my recollection is not consistent with what happened. So I'll, I'll make sure everybody hears, hears the answer, gets the answer. Yes.
Okay, I'm not letting this go. When we get planning commission liaisons coming into our board.
Yeah.
How do we get them mandated to have seen this? Because they, they look at things through planning commission, build, 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 not from zoning board of appeals, where it's, why should we allow you to build? Why should we allow you to break the city ordinances? So I think that's an important part, especially if we're rotating planning, planning commission members at our committee, that they, that they are educated in what we actually do here, opposed to looking at it strictly from a planning commission point of view.
Yes, we have a very specific function, very specific. If you'll allow me to have a discussion with Brent, the department director, and he's the one who works with the planning commission closely. But I think we need to come up with a strategy, because it is important that, as Mr. Bassett broke reminded me, we haven't had one of these in a long time. We should try to do these every year, so everybody gets a refresher. Steph concurs.
Good, thank you.
All right, do we have any more questions for city staff? All right. Well, thank you, Ms. McMillan, that was informative, I think very helpful.
Thank you.
Helps us do our job better and carry out our roles. So thank you very much for the time you put into that. I think that brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. We have time for public comment?
Yes.
Any public comment? I don't see anyone unless any member of the board wants to speak in public comment. Not seeing anyone jumping up. All right, we will then adjourn for, I think you said there's something on the agenda for June?
Yes, we have four matters for June.
All right, so we have some things to do in June. We'll see you in June.